Thank you. The vote calls a little different this time for the new system, so please mark yourself present. Good?
Good, thank you.
I'd like to introduce members of the staff that's here today. Chris Kramer, Director of Community Development. Matt Peter, Deputy City Attorney. Kenny Axmaker, Planner. Dominic Maradini, Planner. Caitlin Long, Planner. Tricia Mason, Executive Administrative Supervisor. Yulene Ibarra, Administrative Specialist. Candace Alexander, Administrative Specialist. I have a motion to the minutes of the last meeting. So vote.
Second.
Mr. Yousher probably not present at the last meeting, so if you abstain from the way. Hard to read on my script. For what, yes, as it's pronounced, we have passed the meeting from the last meeting. Will the city please introduce the first case?
This evening's first case is Z-945-17-19. Shuck Communities Inc. is requesting approval to rezone the property located in January on the southeast corner of Buckley Road and 88th Avenue from Adams County, unincorporated Adams County to PUD planning and development. Information pertaining to notice is in the record, and the case will be presented this evening by Ms. Jenny Antomac.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the planning commission. First case before you is Z-945-17-19. Shuck Communities Inc. is requesting to zone the property located on the southeast corner of 88th and Buckley Road from Adams County A3 Agricultural to Commerce City PUD. Here's where the property is located, it's approximately 160 acres of water section. To the north is East 88th Avenue. To the west is the Rocky Mountain National Wildlife Refuge, Buckley Road. And we have Second Creek in this northeast corner. Power Road here. The property directly to the south is part of the DIA Tech Center, Nexus DIA Development. Then we have the Second Creek Farms Development to the northeast, and we have the Highlands Development to the north. The comprehensive plan calls this site out for office/collect future land use. It also has an employment center designation that's noted by that last year. So here's an aerial of the site. It is, was previously used as a farm, so currently it has very little development on the site. There are some remnants of some agricultural buildings up in the north. Very limited case history. Planning Commission saw a PUD concept schematic for this case back in April of 2018, and based on the feedback provided at that meeting, it helped to inform the PUD document. So the request, the applicant is requesting an annexation zoning of the property from unincorporated Adams County A3 to the Nexus North at DIA PUD designation. The proposed zoning is similar to an I-1 zone district for the Land Development Code with some changes that emulate the DIA Tech Center. So here's the latest plan proposed as part of the PUD document. I'd help point out, there are four proposed planning areas. We have PA1, which is this proportion to the south. PA2 in the northwest corner. PA3 in the middle here. And then PA4 is the Buckley adjacent to Second Creek in the northeast corner. There's Buckley associated with the Second Creek running through the site. This shows the conceptual road layout with these larger black dots. There's proposed trail connections between Second Creek, we'll have a trail running along it, and then the Rocky Mountain Arsenal Perm Pen Trail to the west. And there's also proposed a buffer adjacent to the Arsenal Park. So for land uses, the applicant's intent is to create an employment center. So to make the property attractive to market while not imposing the full extent of I-2 uses and allowing for more intense industrial uses in that PA1 area. So that is this property, or planning areas in the south. So two of the land uses that are most notable that are allowed in the PUD, that would be allowed in the I-1 district, would be the truck transportation services and then the warehouse distribution uses. So the DRT is supportive of the proposal and believes that transitioning some of the uses between the different planning areas will integrate nicely with the surrounding properties. So bulk standards are proposed to be changed for the I-1s in our district. So we're going to increase the building height from 50 feet to 100, increase minimum lot size, as well as the increase floor area ratio from 5% to 15%. The rest is proposed in a much larger dimension. The applicant is proposing design standards through a separate document, which will also include landscape standards. It's going to be offered as one PUD. The applicant submitted this as kind of an overall vision for what the development is trying to achieve through these design standards. So just some pictures to follow up on what the standards are proposing. And as far as connectivity goes, the applicant's proposed a modified street grid network. Access to this development is going to be through Tower Road, which will actually have to travel through the DIA Tech Center development to the south. Be either 81st Avenue or East 83rd. You'll have to get to the site to Quintero Street and Telly Ride Street, which will be extended north. It's important to point out that access off East 88th Avenue will not be used for this development. East 88th, it's truck traffic, it's part of the new. And any improvements to utilizing East 88th would be extended into the part 7th and Second Creek. So truck traffic will funnel through the DIA Tech Center development to the south to get out to Tower Road. And the DRT is supportive of this. So here's just showing me those roadway connections. There's Tower Road, there's East 83rd Avenue, which transitions to East 84th to get to the site. There's Telly Ride Street, which will be extended, Quintero Street will be extended, and then the 81st Avenue. As of the state, staff has received no additional information regarding this project. The DRT is recommending the planning commission vote for this request to City Council with favorable recommendation. Our staff will be happy answering any questions you have at this time. And a representative from Shuck Communities is also here to answer questions.
Great, thank you. Any questions, Mr. Chairman? For the applicant, please. Step four. Please state your name and address.
Good evening, for the record, my name is Brock Chapman with Shuck Communities. I'm off, I'm highly technical.
I'm going to go much better, thank you.
Apologize. Brock Chapman, for the record, Shuck Communities, addresses to North Cascade Avenue, Suite 12 and 80, Colorado Springs, Eats 0903, we are the applicant in this case. Good evening, members of the commission. Thank you for letting me present here tonight. To provide a little bit more context and refresh your memory as well as mine, we were here last April. Hopefully you all remember that discussion. And at that time, we showed you the previous color version, and it made very few changes since then because we were in, received a lot of support from you all at that time. Thought, you all thought we had a pretty good application, it made a lot of sense. The minor changes we did make, besides the color version that doesn't print very well, and those are colors, so we asked people for black and white, were, we took off some of the cul-de-sac shown on there, since we really don't know where the cul-de-sac roadway connections are going to be until we get a user. But that meets the connection requirements for the community in all the planning areas. We're also, if you recall, the developer of Nexus DIA, which is the property in gray just to the south of the one we're here to talk about tonight. That one is, all the large lots in there are either under development, completed, under contract, or sold. So we've got a handful of very small parcels left in there. So this is a timely application to continue what we started out there. Yes, this is a new annexation, it's a new zoning PUD, but in a way, it's a nice extension of what was started at the original Nexus DIA that's been successful in the marketplace to date. Let me first start by saying that we're in full support of the staff report that you all saw. We have no changes or rebuttals or anything to it. So I'm going to try to stay focused on some highlights for you here tonight, and not repeat what's in the staff report too much, or what Ms. Axmaker had to say tonight, just so as not to put you all to sleep. If not officially done, so I don't know the program here, but if the staff report's not officially entered into the public record, I'd like to request it be entered into at this time. Although I assume that's to be done automatically. And since we are in full agreement, we'll just share some more interesting items. We've worked with your DRT staff, primarily Ms. Axmaker in planning over the past several months, to really flesh out the details of this. Many of those details came in the form of design guidelines, buffers, and trail connectivity for pedestrian connectivity from the Second Creek Corridor to the west to where the refuge is. With the 50-foot buffer, it runs clear along the west side of the property. This is a larger buffer than is along our Nexus DIA property to the south. The intent of that is not just to have manicured, hardened division line between the landscape of our project and then where the Rocky Mountain, or excuse me, where the Wildlife Refuge starts, but rather that bring the prairie into the community a little bit, and provide a nice transition using the native grasses and native prairie materials that are already there. We also providing some seating for passive pedestrian use along that trail that's planned on the west property boundary. So people that use that trail will be able to sit and enjoy the views to the west. If you really want to delve into those design guidelines, there are a little more detail that I think you want me to get into here tonight, but you should have been provided the design guidelines for the project, and those are on pages 10 and 11, if you're just dying to read the details of that buffer, and what type of materials are proposed in the pedestrian uses through there. But again, the idea is to provide a nice transition through there and bring the prairie into the edge of the community instead of a hard defining line. A couple of other things we did in the land use table at the request of your DRT and your planning staff, we included a few more uses than you originally saw when we were here in April. They were minor, but they asked us to include some research facilities, biomedical research, I believe some government conference center uses as well, if I recall correctly. So you have a handful of additional uses as well from what you all originally saw in April. Additionally, besides the land, well, a couple of other things of note. The intensity of the uses, transition from the south to the north, with the more intense uses adjacent to our current Nexus DIA Tech Center property, and then becoming less intense as you get into the north, as you get into Planning Areas 2 and 3, not allowing the heavy industrial distribution, transportation, truck uses in the north portions of Planning Area 2 and 3. And again, as Ms. Axmaker said, there is no connectivity. We propose that 88th Avenue would keep truck traffic off of 88th and away from residential areas. We also, oh, therefore, all the uses within all the planning areas will all funnel through the project itself into 83rd Avenue and connect at the tower, and then also to 81st Avenue and connect at the tower. Both of those will be signalized intersections. There's already a signal at 81st Avenue. In fact, we have a meeting with your staff tomorrow on the Nexus DIA project to talk about funding the signal and getting that installed on 83rd Avenue. So that's going to happen far in advance of this particular project anyway. And in fact, it's actually recorded with the Nexus DIA project, which is already underway. We also provided some enhanced design guidelines for additional building elevations, elevations at front 88th Avenue, Second Creek Corridor, and in Planning Areas 2 and 3, those that abut in front onto public right of way. It's either those building enhancements, or we can provide additional screening and landscape. Again, I won't read everything verbatim, that took a while to work out. But those, if you're dying to read those in detail, they're on pages 10, 16, 18, and 19 of the design guidelines. And they talk about all the allowable uses, materials, enhancements, and architectural features that are required for those to have both public use of the buildings themselves. Utilities are obviously available to serve the site. Most of them come straight up through the DIA Tech Center site to the south that we're developing right now. I think there's a water main, we're in discussions of South Adams County Water Sanitation District to bring a water line for some looping along 88th Avenue, or a canset if there's one already there, I can't recall exactly, but we're in detailed discussions on the utilities already. I should also point out that this is 160-acre property, but because of that Second Creek Corridor, none of that is developable for primary uses. Around that is, leaves us with about 118 developable acres, is all out of the whole 160. So that's kind of the intensive use, and that provides a nice natural buffer to those properties to the north anyway and to the east. So that's worked out nicely for this. Obviously, there's no connectivity through the Wildlife Refuge to the west. And we believe, just to go on record, the planning commission is justified in approving this PUD zoning request for the following reasons. I'm not going to read them all because they're included in your packet, but if you refer to the staff report that shows all the individual reasons that the criteria have been met for this PUD, I would appreciate it. All minimum approval criteria have been met. We've provided enhancements to this plan that are beyond the minimum city requirements. The comp plan supports what the uses we're intending to provide here. It offers, the PUD designation offers significantly, well, or at least the opportunity for less intensive uses over the whole property, particularly Planning Areas 2 and 3, than what your standard zoning I-1, I-2 otherwise allow. Last, again, because of all the various land uses that are all related out here, we do have a whole section in there that's a table. And that table is the same table that we used previously with your DRT staff in our Nexus DIA property. And it goes on to show which uses are used by right, which ones are conditional uses, which ones require use permit. And I should point out, there's specifically no residential allowed within this development or PUD. It's within the contours of DIA, the runway areas. And so that's important to note, that we're not proposing any residential uses or any allowed out here. I think I'll end it there. I thank you for your kind of consideration. I'll try to answer any questions you have. I appreciate the opportunity.
Thanks. Any questions from the commissioners?
Hi Brock.
Hello?
How are you?
Good, well, thank you.
As we brought up last time, just so everybody here knows that I have been personally friends with Steve Everson and Steve Chau. I can't say. Value their opinion. Mr., are you folks developing the area to the north of 84th and to the west of, or the east of Tullbray?
Yes, Ms. Axmaker, if you could point out that there is one, well, you're talking about east of Telly Ride, right?
East of Tullbray.
And north of 84th. We have one 19-acre parcel there, that's it. It's one 19-acre parcel. That one is under contract with a user who's already done other projects in the park. And that's, that is part of, approved and moving forward as part of the Nexus DIA property. It's not part of this application tonight, but yes, we do own that, and we haven't started any development activities, since it's just one under contract, but that is part of the original Nexus DIA property. I'm curious as to why you ask.
Well, I'm kind of curious as to the compatibility between the different areas, you know, nexus and then next to the Nexus DIA. Not only from a visual standpoint, but a transportation standpoint, what kinds of things are going to be there that will impact the neighborhood, not just this specific piece of property.
Okay, well, let's start with the easy area first. Everything to the west is 16,000 acres of open space, so there's nothing there that will ever be developed, since that's the Wildlife Refuge. The Nexus DIA property that we have already under development, it essentially has the same uses as the uses within the Nexus North property, that's the lower, I'll say, half, two-thirds of the property. Yeah, that's Planning Area 1. So that compatibility, it's all the same. There will be no incompatibility between the two. As you proceed further north, this is within the project, and I know your question was greater than that, but that has similar uses, although it doesn't have the intensive uses. No major distribution, transportation, big truck base, that's more office flex space. And then, of course, without the connectivity on 88th Avenue, you'll have no truck traffic or any traffic going on 88th from either this proposed Nexus North plan or the Nexus DIA. People have to come out to Tower on 83rd or 81st Street. Now, we had a traffic engineer take a look at, as is required, but more than the way we take a look at everything at, for not only Nexus DIA, not only Nexus North, but they also factor in all the background traffic anticipated for this region through the year 2040, I believe. And of course, the levels of service at those intersections, they take those peak hour demands, either peak morning or peak afternoon, and you want, A, A is no traffic, then it goes B, C, D, E, and F. You want everything at peak, at D or better. All the signalized intersections of this at the year 2040 build out. We'll have a peak hour rush hour demand, all at D or better. So that's hitting the target that everybody wants. So the traffic is designed, the road system is all designed to handle the traffic that will come in and out of here, again, funneling everything further down to Tower. Most of the traffic generation will head south, so we can catch Penya, and then take you to I-7 or I-25 across where we're headed across the country. So it's almost, I won't say ideal, but it's almost ideal that we're not putting traffic further north on Tower Road, and that all the intersections that do come out of Tower, that serve a majority of the projects, are signalized intersections. There is, and again, not associated with this property, but there is a little ride-in, ride-out for some retail stuff we have between 81st and 83rd. That will get a little congested for ride-in, ride-out during peak hour traffic, just because of traffic queuing, but with an Excel lane, which we anticipate will go in when the retail goes in there, that goes away as well. We also have buffer addition, go into, we have additional buffer and landscape requirements between PA3 and the drainage corridor of Second Creek. So Ms. Axmaker can speak to that, since she brought that up, and we responded accordingly. But we've provided adequate buffers, and without having any traffic go, this is a pretty self-contained little community out here of a business park. And we anticipate for the type of uses out here, it's going to have very little impact on either future or current existing neighborhoods or other uses in the area.
So there'll be no, there'll be no access to?
88th to the north, that's correct.
Zero.
Yeah.
But aren't those buildings more than likely going to be higher occupants from a people's standpoint?
Though, well, we hope so in economic development.
With their flex office, you know, you have, you know, 200, 300 people in the building instead of an industrial like in the south part of the park.
Yeah, it'll be more, it'll be more flex office, smaller trucks, you won't have the big truck traffic. And economic development, again, was pretty adamant that we figured out a way to try to get that done to provide the job creation associated with this. So yes, your statement is correct, there will be probably more and smaller users, but you will not have the distribution functions of the truck bays or anything with those areas to the north. Even so, we still, we still, in talking with staff and for our own expectations for the project, everybody felt that connecting traffic to 88th Avenue just wasn't the best for some rear community, even though it's not going to be larger trucks. So as of now, and the way the plan reads, there's no traffic going out to 88th. I want to make sure I answered your questions correctly, though.
I think so. That's the thing with traffic, how intense the different uses are.
Yeah, and so just so you know, if the traffic study was part of the submittal, and if you read that traffic study, the various land uses that are allowed, with the levels of intensity I described previously, they were included in that. And with their Uniform Traffic Code, they've got the exact traffic generation that comes out of those various uses. So we think we, in the traffic making area, and with your staff, we've got that right.
Put an office, an office building or a flex building in the north end of 88th, the guy lives on 100th and 11th, he's got a long yard home.
Well, yeah, and again, you're talking peak hours. Most of the traffic that's by the larger trucks, I mean, as you guys can imagine, or maybe have read, or have personal knowledge of, with the technology and the GPS nowadays, with these transportation companies, they don't want to be sitting on the road idling. So they try to avoid peak rush hour coming in and out of here anyway. So really, it's going to be the background traffic on Tower Road for somebody that's in the very northwest corner of the project, working at a flex office building one day. They'll either meander through the project, come down either Quintero or Telly Ride, and out to 83rd most likely, and then head south. There just shouldn't be, again, much, based on the configuration of the road, there shouldn't be much conflict internally. All the intersections, the major intersections, by the way, at 84th and Quintero and Telly Ride, they operate at a level of service A most of the day, and I think they, I'll have to check, but I think they get the level of service B3, peak hour. So again, it's internally, there's almost no traffic issues. It's just all the background traffic over the next 21 or 22 years on the, on Tower, which is to be expected, are where things would slow down for employees here.
Do you have tenants for a part of these, or anticipating?
No, it's been breaking my heart, because we're not marketing this yet, but I've received a number of calls on interest in Nexus North, and I basically told them it's just a little premature to be talking to you about uses or buying the property, explained to them our annexation zoning schedule. And for me, it just seems like really bad karma to be trying to sell a project, we don't have the title on it, so I'm just out of superstition, so I'll call you later. So we've had interest, but no meaningful discussions, I just put everybody off.
Are the design standards the same that Nexus North, as they are Nexus DIA?
They're enhanced, actually. The base design standards are essentially the same, and are much the same for Planning Area 1. However, where the design standards are increased and enhanced are related to the items I already mentioned, which is the buffer to the west of the Wildlife Refuge to be any buildings that front along the drainage corridor, I call it drainage, sorry, Second Creek Corridor, as well as 84th Avenue or 88th Avenue. And then in some cases, internal collector street, public right of way in Planning Areas 2 and 3. So they're quite a bit more enhanced, depending on the orientation of those buildings and view of them.
Have you had any ever considered discussion with vets on having either foot traffic or limited traffic access into sort of?
To access into where?
Into the Wildlife Reserve.
You know, we have not, I think it'd be wonderful, right now, there's a pretty good-sized fence up along there that sets the boundary. I've heard various rumors over time that they're going to have buffalo out there and all sorts of stuff, so I don't know how much they want people out there or not. I'd love to turn my kids loose out there for a day, and say, go get in trouble and have a good time and experience wildlife, but I'm not sure, we probably should follow up on that. In fact, we have a meeting with the Parks Departments tomorrow, and Trails Departments, I'll bring that up.
Yeah, I'm sorry, I forgot your name.
I'm Brock Chapman, yes.
Brock, okay. Brock, my concern is traffic also. Anything coming from the north? Anything coming from I-76? So north down I-25? So there's two main truck quarters in the United States. There's I-70, and there's I-8. And I understand I-70, they could take into Penya, and that'll make an easy exit onto Tower, and an easy, easy way to get to your property, with very limited impact on residential areas, I understand that. My concern is north of there. If I was a director, I'd, and I always come in from I-76, or I-25, or I-80, I would come down 76. And 76, I would come probably onto 104th, maybe onto 136th. But I would think that... 136th, but I would think a GPS would route you to 104th. And I live in the reunion area, and 104th is getting more and more traffic. So my concern is truck traffic on 104th going to Tower Road accessing that property.
Well, I can attempt to speak to that. I don't think they analyzed 104th specifically in the traffic study, other than the required building in of the background traffic and growth projections over time. We have been in discussions with your Public Works Department, and continue those discussions about the timing of 83rd Avenue and that signal. We have finally, been working with your staff, they want to see that traffic signal go in sooner, and the main reason is because they want people to be able to make a north left-hand turn from our community going north. Now, it won't be a majority of the distribution, but they do want that spread out, so I feel like I'm in a little bit of a pickle here in that they are encouraging some traffic to go north, so when they queue, we can come, we can make that a left turn there. Now, you're talking about traffic coming the other way, coming from the north.
Right.
I guess I can't speak to that here tonight, I don't want to do a song and dance up here, other than to say the GPS is probably not going to take them the way that is the most, necessarily the shortest, but the most time-efficient way.
But again, if you're coming from I-80 or from I-25 south, I would think you wouldn't go all the way to 70 and then take Penya in. A GPS would probably route you some other means, either 144th, 136th, 120th. I could also say, now, if memory serves me, 96 is a two-lane, correct?
96, well, it is a two-lane with, I think, some XL, DXL at every major intersection. Yeah, two, yes.
Okay. That's the other thing I can see is 96 being a four-lane, so, because again, 96 hooks up with 76, and you, so you wouldn't necessarily take traffic off of 104th, but you have equal four-lane highways, and I would think even 96 would be closer and more attractive to a GPS than 104th.
What I can do tonight is, we can make notes, we can talk to our traffic engineer and try to get a little bit more specific answer for you when we go to City Council. The other thing we can do is, we do have users out there today, and I can see if I can get some information from them on how their folks are accessing and their GPS software's telling them, but sitting here tonight, I'm not sure I can give you an answer that would be anything but speculation from me, and I don't want to go on record with a misleading statement. And I would say one other thing, just to be fair and honest and equitable here, you know, there's going to be some major improvements going on on I-70 for a couple of years in the near future with all that overpass and everything, so there may be a couple of years of where I-70 doesn't look that attractive going through the stockyard area where all that redevelopment is going to be occurring. So there may be an interim condition where, yeah, you may be right, there may be some additional truck traffic during an interim period of time while I-70 and that elevated portion of I-70 is being redeveloped as well, but luckily that's up.
Just to clarify, our public works staff has extensively regarded the traffic standard approach, so they've taken into consideration the directions that truck traffic may go, and they feel that this solution is, needs our transportation planning, the appropriate one.
I do appreciate that, I just can't look you in the eye and tell you about 96 tonight, that's all.
Mr. Chair, just to follow up on that for a moment, speaking of regional transportation issues for the area, especially as it relates to truck traffic, first of all, 104th is designated as a truck round. It was expanded to four lanes, it does have the opportunity to expand to six, should the demand warrant an expansion. Furthermore, Tower Road was recently expanded to four lanes through a bond vote that Commerce City voters approved, and I can tell you from the City Council perspective, one thing staff heard quite a bit about was the opportunity for that expansion to incentivize and create opportunities for new economic development, such as you see before here tonight. So I think, I don't want to discount the impacts of truck traffic, that is precisely the reason why staff requires this middle of the traffic study, and that's precisely why our Public Works Department analyzes that and provides input through this recommendation to you and to City Council. I would just offer to you that there is capacity that is in the system, both on Tower Road and 104th, not only for today, but future expansions as well.
Thank you. I will also add that with the opening of the interchange at Penya and Tower, that in theory should take a lot of the truck traffic that might otherwise use standard intersections and traffic signals to provide them that quick, easy access on the Penya, now that that's open.
Any other comments or questions?
I just want to thank you, Brock, for being candid. I would like to try to focus a little bit on the case in general. Of us, we have a lot of speculation going on about traffic and whatnot, so I appreciate staff interjecting and giving us background on the transportation study that was taken, so I'll leave my comments there.
Thank you. Thank you for stepping forward.
Thank you.
We'll now open up for any public comment on the case. We'll now close the public comment. Any further discussion between the commissioners? May I have a motion for the case?
Mr. Chairman, I move for planning commission and a refining. Request review the zone document for the purpose of location in southeast corner of the road and east 88th Avenue contained in case Z9.5, page 17, page 19. It's the criteria of the Land Development Code and based upon such finding, I recommend that the City Council approve and be signed up.
Second.
Thank you for presenting the case. Will the city please introduce the second case?
Mr. Chair, first, if I may be so bold, before I do that, I failed earlier this evening to make sure that we got a clear standing of the agenda this evening. The agenda is published for the study session after adjournment, as opposed to after case number two, and it is the intention that I can go ahead and have that during the third case before we get a commission business attorney, business staff. So if that's appropriate, I just want to make sure that you have the opportunity to review that and amend the agenda accordingly.
That's fine, any comments?
So then, okay, second case tonight, CUP-121-19, Able and Organics has requested approval of a conditional use permit to allow for the outdoor storage of mold piles up to 25 feet in height for the property located at 9109 Monaco Street, Zone I2, medium intensity industrial district. All information pertaining to notice and publication is in the record. Mr. Dominic Martinelli will be presenting the case this evening on behalf of the city, but I understand before that, Mr. David Yost would like to address the board.
I am blood relatives with, sorry. I am blood relative with Bob Yost, who is the owner of Able and Organic. I have never spoken to Bob about this proposal. I don't hold any financial gain from it, and I adhere to being impartial in my judgment.
Just for sake of clarity, what is the, your relation with Bob Yost is my, is my intention to be our cousins, is that correct?
Yes, sir.
And do you have any interest in Able and Organic?
No.
Do you have any personal or private interest in the case to be heard tonight?
None.
Do you have any information about this case, other than what is before you tonight that would inform your vote?
None.
Can you be free from bias in your decision tonight?
Yes.
Can you be objective in your decision tonight?
Yes.
Thank you, sir.
Mr. Chair, one quick clarification, the advocate's report that Mr. Yost is not the owner of the operation, but instead, I believe is the C-O-O.
CTO.
CTO.
Okay.
So just to clarify that for the record.
Thank you. Please go forward.
Thank you to the planning commissioner, I prepared this case. My name is Dominic Martinelli, and I will be presenting the case for Able and Organic. So this is a request for a commission use permit to allow material pile storage up to 25 feet in height. The subject property is currently Zone I2. It was rezoned from agricultural to I2 in 2014. The site surroundings, the property is in exfoliate of the city, where it's surrounded on all four sides by uncorporate and outgrown properties. To the south of the property, there's currently a mining operation occurring. To the east, there are a number of hotels and commercial areas, and then directly to the northeast of the site are a number of agricultural properties that have residence. And then to the north and to the west, as shown here, are large storage ponds currently in by the room. So the site history will start by kind of going through the history of the property and its development. So from 1995 to 2002, Ullin Gravel Company was a mining operation that occurred on the site. From 2002 to 2013, there was a main co-operation that occurred on the site. Close closure operations were completed in 2014, and then the property was rezoned to I2. A loaner in the middle was attempting to remove the property from the 100-year-old building, and then within that proposal, rezoning, an development plan subdivision is completed in order to allow for current brothers trucking, which currently has disproportionate site, and there was a risk of close for re-storage of the property. In 2015, the development plan was amended to allow for Able and Organic to operate on the last half of this site. Since then, 2016, there's a brother's trucking Able and Organic in operation on the site. During a final planning inspection, discovered that the mold piles were at the maximum of their storage, I don't know, eight feet at that time, and in response to that, a high exception application was applied for. In 2017, the board heard that case and it was denied, primarily due to the fact that the criteria related to a high exception did not apply since it was part of another structure. So there's some debate whether or not the subject property is eligible to apply to that type of case. So the applicant is requesting an association of this, a 25, to allow for mold pile storage of 25 feet in height. The applicant stated that that height is necessary to efficiently, effectively, and safely develop the business. They state that there's a problem with the storage of mold piles at eight feet or smaller due to the fact that they are more susceptible to wind erosion and have greater dust effects. Larger piles are more compact, and if they're sprayed down, reduce dust effects. So the site operations and layout, recycled wood products are converted into mold piles along the site, so that's the indirect activity that occurs. Wood is delivered to the site by individuals and general members of the public or large shipments. So this can be wood pallets, tree limbs, a number of the expensive organic material. It's converted into molds through a grinding process, and then the mold is done on the site and then delivered off site to commercial site. So the incoming product and grinding operations occur on the south west part of the site. So you can kind of see here, as a truck comes in, will come through along the south natural and asphalt road, both dump off wood waste and some of that organic material. It is then converted into mold piles through the grinding operations that occur on the south west part of the site, and there's also topsoil amendments that are used on the site, which is stored here. Those woodchips are then stored here, and then the dyeing equipment, and where that, the raw woodchips are converted, but it occurred towards the east of the site. You can see that there are dry piles that exist throughout the site, these are 25 feet with to accommodate fire access, and they provide this delineation and boundary between the different areas, the functional aspects of the site. So you can see here, these are, this is the circulation of how trucks move throughout the site, showing those different materials. They are paper plastics and road base, and the applicant is also requesting to pay the eastern oil and dry oil with percent of asphalt for additional dust filtration. The applicant maintains water trucks on a daily basis to spray down the road base to reduce dust effects as well.
Can you turn up the light just a little bit more?
Sure.
Maybe just a bit back as well?
Yeah, I don't know if it goes up anywhere, but.
A little bit.
Can you guys all hear me?
Better.
So there's a significant drop-off on the site around 30 to 35 feet from the front side of the site to the back of the site. The aggregate mine is isolated to the south along our paper bags adequate visual screen and mold piles for most of the locations. History as a former landfill really limits the types of uses that can occur on the site. It becomes challenging to build a structure of any reasonable significance due to soil issues and a number of other things. So the types of uses that are limited to this western portion of the site, that's previously in the foot line, is primarily upriver storage. So here's a visual example that shows the geography. These are two foot contour lines that are shown on the staff here, so you can see from the eastern portion of the site, there's a pretty significant drop-off right here, and the remaining portion of the site is roughly 30 to 35 feet something below the primary Monaco street arterial that goes through. Because of this and because of the mining operation itself, there are a number of site-related constraints that really screen the mold piles from the field. And then here are some examples of site visibility, so there are a number of different locations throughout the site, so the view, the top left corner is the view direct from Monaco Street, these one and two, and then some of the other remaining sites show the visibility from trails, crosses on the right, and other locations as well. And to show, here's aerial imagery from June 2018 that shows what the operations currently look like. You can see how some of these mold piles currently lay out, and you can see the dry piles and the boundaries that are in place. And then here's some visual examples of how the mold piles look like. The lower right-hand corner shows a photo of Jersey Barriers, which delineate the boundaries of the, with the classics road-based dry piles, and they provide sort of barriers and boundaries to make sure that the mold piles are continuously fluctuating and moving and causing access issues for fire. And then along the eastern portion, property boundary, we wanted to show the visual distinction that there's probably a fence on the eastern property boundary line, and it slopes down a little bit as this property is slightly raised from that. The applicant is proposing to place a fence that sort of acts like a net along this portion of the ridge to reduce which would bring anything that would be moved around during a significant amount of that. And then here's some additional photos of mold equipment and aerial views of the property, so you can see how, and especially the lower right-hand corner, how it compares to the aerial imagery, how sometimes the property changes and shifts a little bit. So some possible impacts, staff and a number of state and local agencies have conducted various site visits about this process to show possible impacts in nearby areas, especially related to dust. Nearby residents during the last quarter adjustment hearing, as well as the neighborhood meetings, had voiced complaints about some of these issues. In 2016, a broader environmental public health environment had an active case regarding the heat and non-toxic mold skies in nearby land areas, so there were submissions of containment of the mold skies when they were converting the raw woodchips and final product. The CDPE has closed that case out and has worked with the applicant to ensure that proper mitigation is in place, all of the mold piles are bound by silts socks to reduce any sort of... All of the molten piles are bound by silts socks to reduce any sort of dye from the community to the local areas. A neighborhood meeting was conducted for this case, which was held on Monday, May 30th, 2018. A number of the adjacent property owners as well as other members of the public were in attendance. Attendees expressed concern about blowing dust, especially in windy days. And one outcome of this meeting was a discussion of a net on the eastern boundary to catch woodchip degrees, which has since been incorporated into the development plan. So along with this, understanding that dust mitigation is one of the most significant aspects of the site that needs to be regulated within the conditional use permit, the applicant has proposed these measures as a result of the conversations and the concerns of the residents. So they proposed a high net on the eastern property boundary to catch woodchip degrees that would blow up in a large event. The applicant has also created a dust mitigation plan, which has been included in the package tonight. It talks about a number of additional dust mitigation practices that are in place. The applicant stated to shut down operations when wind speeds exceed 15 miles an hour and they're constantly monitoring the wind on the property. They also conduct water spraying and suppression of not only the molten piles, but the dry piles to reduce feature dust that could result as their, are their operations. In order to assist with ongoing enforcement and making sure that the piles do not exceed the 20-foot, 5-foot height limit, the borough's demarcation pole was to be constructed for neighborhood services to be able to visually compare the height of the pole to the size of the molten piles and make sure that it's not exceeding that limit. There's also a proposed 100-foot setback from residential properties for molten piles and a 500-foot setback from residential properties for the grinding and screening operations on site. The applicant has proposed to pave the easternmost dry pile with recycled asphalt to specifically reduce the dust impacts directly adjacent to the existing residential properties in town. The developer review team has had a chance to review the merits of the case, all the different factors that play into this, and is supporting the conditional use permit for material storage up to 25 feet due to the mitigation techniques that have been demonstrated to staff, a number of the efforts that are in place. The DRT is determining that all reasonable efforts are being proposed to try and reduce these impacts. The 25-foot piles help the site operate in a safe and effective manner due to the fact that these larger molten piles reduce the amount of dust and the amount of woodchip degree and other aspects that would make the site hard to navigate and have impacts on operations and safety. The 25-foot dry piles along erratic fire access and site circulation. And then specifically, the site itself and its configuration and layout, the topography, and the aggregate mining facility in the south for mine. So you have to screen for molten piles of this height. The DRT also recommends 12 additional conditions to ensure that the ongoing use does not have substantial or adverse effect on adjacent properties. As part of the DRT analysis, the city also reviewed the comprehensive plan, which is a guiding land use document that helps inform planning decisions that are made. It found that it's meeting a number of the goals within the comprehensive plan, specifically through the reduction of solid waste disposal. By reducing the amount of organic material that ends up in landfills, including reusable product, it's informing a number of the environmental sustainable goals that are contained in the comprehensive plan. It also meets the comprehensive plan by developing in accordance with the city's future land use plan. And then it also is developing a previously underutilized site, an infold development site, which has had some significant development challenges to begin with. And then to show you here is the future land use plan, which is an exhibit to the city's comprehensive plan. So you can see that the subject property, which is shown highlighted in blue, is listed as industrial distribution with the wetland portion being agricultural. As part of this development, the wetland area that exists on the west portion of the site is barricaded off when there's no operations that currently occur here. By developing and allowing us use to comply with that, it's in compliance with the future land use plan and how the city anticipates these areas to grow as they eventually annex the city. So we'll go through some of the proposed conditions, just give a general summary of all of them. We have 12 proposed conditions. The initial condition is proposing that the C.U.P. expire after 18-month period. This will provide planning commission, city council to reiterate the merits of the case and determine whether or not the mitigation measures that have been implemented as part of this have been effective and provide another chance to review. It's granted only for the storage of dyed molchips and recycled wood product, material stackers and raw woodchips. This is essentially to protect and make sure that the 25-foot height limit has been used by other types of outdoor storage that might occur that are directly related to their operations. That the molten pile should be a minimum of 100 feet from adjacent residential properties at any given time. And then the 500-foot setback for grinding and screening operations. And the additional condition is writing operations will not occur on the site when wind speeds are 15 miles an hour for a duration of at least 10 minutes. The applicant will be required to maintain the high net on the eastern property boundary without woodchips or belonging to the adjacent properties. The construction of the 25-foot demarcation pole, which we described. And then the primary dry piles, the outdoor storage area, being paved with recycled asphalt on the eastern portion of the site. Water trucks will be kept and utilized on the site during business hours considering the size of the dry piles. The property would act in accordance with the dust control plan, which is included as Exhibit A. And then the general maintenance would be free of garbage, trash, and excessive woodchips. And that the applicant shall apply qualified state of the law. The approval criteria that the conditional use permit is reviewed against will be part of the decision that's recommended tonight is that adverse impacts are mitigated to the maximum extent feasible. The site characteristics that have been demonstrated are suitable for use. We would not impose undue burdens on the city services or utilities. I have been assurances of continued maintenance and upkeep of the site, that it does not violate state or local law, and that the use implies the purposes, goals, and policies of the city's company. As of February 5th, staff received one additional request of information regarding this case. We will also talk about the public notification regarding the previous case, the high exception that was heard in 2017. Staff received two statements of opposition prior to that public hearing, and five members of the public spoke in opposition to the case during that board of justice hearing. The DRT recommends, the planning commission recommends approval to the city council regarding this conditional use permit, subject to proposed conditions A through L, which can be found in the staff report. Staff is available to answer any questions he may have, and the applicant also doesn't speak today.
Thank you, Dominic. Any questions for Dominic?
Go ahead. Last year, the Waste Management had to fire one of the cycling plants. Is there any requirement for a fire suppression system here?
In terms of a fire suppression system, I'm not aware of a specific department that we've placed regarding this. I know that the operations that you currently oppose are regarding spraying down the molten piles and reducing the flintability and having that 25-foot high molten pile limit with that.
Mr. Chair, Mr. Rineau, or, sorry, Mr. Rindelli, does the 25-foot height relate to the fire codes at all?
Yes, so the 25-foot height limit is a limit that's actually placed by the International Fire Code, so that's what the maximum limit for outdoor storage for combustible materials are.
Thank you. Any other questions for?
Yeah, Dominic, I have a question. 10 minutes of 15 mile an hour wind can create a heck of a lot of dust. Why wouldn't we make, or is it possible to make that time limit shorter? You can forget those things reasonably well, you know, within minutes when you see it coming down.
Yeah.
Five minutes, you know, if you get a 15-minute, I mean, a 10-minute, 15 mile an hour wind, then you get one or two ruins in there, that'd create a lot of havoc, it goes a long ways.
Sure. I wanted to, just to talk about sort of the nature of the conditional use permit. The word conditional is one of the main features of this type of case. Planning commission can recommend that certain conditions are amended. The thinking behind the 10-minute sustained maximum 15 mile an hour winds was to contemplate whether or not that wind gust or windstorm would be sustained over a period of time to necessitate them to shut down operations to reduce those impacts. If planning commission determines that that duration should be shorter, that can be as well. What I will do is let the applicant speak a little bit more about their specific weather monitoring systems and how they actually manage this on the site, and what some limitations might be, and whether or not that's a reasonable requirement as well.
Was there further discussions on the 18-month, or how was this conversation between you and applicant on that 18-month conditional use permit?
So the 18-month was not something that staff regularly had conversations with. This was a time duration that was established during the development review team meeting. 18 months is specifically because some of the potential impacts from the site. 18 months felt like a duration where the merits of the case could be reasonably reviewed in a short timeframe. There is potential to potentially extend that to be longer than that desire as well.
Mr. Chair, if I might just add to that, I think everything Mr. Rindelli says is correct. I would add to that, that with previous conditional use permits, I think a typical duration is actually usually longer than that. So we are recommending a shorter time just because of the potential impacts to nearby properties. So it's certainly the duration of that, just like the wind speed or any other conditions, that's certainly up for, should the planning commission wish to recommend approval. If you do, those conditions are obviously subject to discussion and amendment, should you desire.
Chris, if I can address you for a moment. Is it, is it possible, I know in the commercial world and other venues, you can have third-party monitoring of some of these things. Is it possible to include that in our requirements to have third-party monitoring during the 18-month?
Yes, I guess I would just inquire for more specification. What would we have a third party monitor specifically? Is it the potential impacts of dust, is it the occurrence of high winds? What would we specifically wish a third party to review?
Their compliance with things that are being avowed, like specifically on a random basis.
If I may, we do have Neighborhood Services Department that does do code enforcement, and would, their authority would include inspections and compliance with the conditions of the C.U.P.
Question, how about?
One other thing that I'd like to add to that as well, there are some additional complaints that have been filed and not to the city, but to the Department of Public Health, Department of Health Department, which have gone and done sort of a third-party agency examination of the dust mitigation impacts. So they, there have been other instances for other agencies that have called about the dust impacts. And from the reports and information that I've received, there have been significant violations.
I think where we might be driving, and I'm seeing one thing missing, is we're talking about a 25-foot pole to talk about the height, and we have a condition of 15 miles per hour for 10 minutes, but I'm not seeing anything that speaks to a wind meter. So I don't believe that the enforcement person for the city carries around a wind meter with them stuff for 10 minutes to see if this is actually working or not. How might, and this is kind of for staff, would the code enforcement officer go out there and say, "Yeah, I don't have a wind meter at 15 miles an hour for 10 minutes, and here we go." I mean, I think that's where this may be driving.
Sure. The idea of a condition to make a wind meter available for inspection purposes is certainly a possibility. You know, at this point, there is technology available to enforcement folks to look at very, pretty site-specific wind readings. There, for example, there are apps that help tell that in a fairly narrow range. Obviously, their phone is not taking wind readings, I'm not suggesting that. But there are applications that they can use to help supplement that certain information. With that said, an onsite accessible through code enforcement wind reading system is certainly a condition that is something that if planning commission wanted to consider, would, is something that would, could be added.
Yes, thank you. And I just see the enforcement part of this is going to be the challenging part, you know. I would say that from the city perspective, how do you enforce this? What is equitable to everyone, of the residents, of the business, of, you know, the public's safety and health of this? How does that factor into one of these conditions? Because we can sit here and set conditions all we want, but if we don't have a solid plan for enforcement and what that looks like. I mean, I'll take an example of noise traveling from Dick's Soccer Stadium during a bassneater.
Sure.
You know, concert that three miles away, someone says, "Hey, the whole Stapleton community's upset" that this is happening. So it came down to enforcement, the monitoring, the reading. I think that's where we're driving this.
What I might recommend, Mr. Chair, is on that specific element of a wind reading system, you might have the opportunity to hear from the applicant about what they might already have in place. And then furthermore, I would recommend maybe also taking the opportunity to hear the rest of the testimony, any other input, and only if you want to make a recommendation of approval, would you want to maybe then kick around, how might those conditions then be attached to set approval, if that's even what you might.
And if I'm not mistaken, Chris, there are, there are technological methods of not only monitoring the wind, but air quality on a off-base, you know, site. Somebody could set it in their office and figure out what the air quality of the wind is to kind of, because if we, if we rely on the guy sticking his head, his hand up in the air, somebody's going to get a pile of dirt chips in their yard and, and going to say, "Sorry, we'll try to improve that." I think some sort of monitoring, and maybe it's, we should hear, you know, how they monitor that. But certainly, I think it's important that we help the code enforcement specifically because it's Ian, and this is more, you know, just, you know, we two.
Understood, thank you, Mr. Good. Probably have the applicant step forward and have the inspection. Could you state your name and address, please?
Sure thing. Good evening, my name is Ryan McBreen with Norris Design. 1101 Banning Street, Denver, Colorado, 80204. Sorry, I just didn't remember. Glad you took it, it's right in my way. We're the planner and landscape architect of record on this project here. And first, just want to thank Dominic and staff again. At this point, it's been, let's say it's been a long process, but we've kind of gone back and forth and just tried to work through a lot of issues because this is, this is a touchy issue. We want to make sure that we've addressed everything sufficiently and covered all of it.
Yes, here you.
And got there. So, sorry, it's tough being tall sometimes. So first, we do have a presentation, but I want to address some of the questions you guys brought up. If that's all right, we'll start there first. Related to fire tonight, there are two fire hydrants on the property, as well as the fire department has been out there on several occasions to tour the site, make sure the roads are clear, everything like that. They found no issues, so we've, they've worked diligently with them to make sure that we're good there. As far as the question about sustaining winds 10 miles an hour, or excuse me, 15 miles an hour for 10 minutes, that's kind of a number, I believe, we got T-shirts using, just to kind of put a baseline on it. But in all honesty, when the wind kicks up, they stop production. They do have an onsite weather station to track that current, the plan is to have it on that demarcation pole so they can track that and keep it going. Because we have to remember too, they don't want this stuff blowing off their site because that's what they're producing. If it's on somebody else's site, if it's blowing other places, they can't sell it and they can't make money. So it's in their best interest to keep that on their property. So, it's in their best interest to keep that on their property. As far as review, EPA comes out, fire department, public health comes out, the city comes out, and the county comes out. So, there's four different review agencies that are out there regularly checking on them to make sure that they are operating as they are supposed to be. So, a couple items there. I'll go through a few more slides built upon what Dominic mentioned. Trying not to be too repetitive, so we'll kind of go from there. So, Dominic, can I go to the next page? Just a little bit about A1 Organics. They provide organic compost, soils, mulches, and recycling materials. They divert over 350,000 tons of waste per year from car oil landfills. That's pretty significant. It's been family-owned and operated since the mid-'70s. There's currently four locations in the state: Eaton, Keansburg, Inwood, and this Commerce City location. I already understand where the site is. City authorities in the west, surrounded by Adams County elsewhere, and the orange is Commerce City. 31 acres. Just to reiterate, what we're doing there and what we're, is already a use by right. We're allowed to do what we do. We're just asking to kind of make it a better, a better situation for all involved. Dominic kind of covered the development plan already. Brown Brothers is there on the far east side, kind of the finger of the project. It's more at street level with Monaco. And A1 Organics is kind of the back half of the site with the further back being floodplain. Falls significantly, as Dominic said, from the next slide. This is the view. I think Dominic showed this view already. This is the view from Monaco. You can see, you can barely see anything back there. Falls significantly. You can't see piles. You can't even see the operation back there. One thing to point out is we've been, they've been operating in the site in July, so it's been three and a half years they've been at this site. We've had zero public health or safety violations from those groups. A lot of those, a lot of those review agencies come out with this complaint, if a neighborhood complains or anything like that. So, they come out, they're pretty prompt about that. In that time, we haven't had any safety or public health violations, just something like that out there. Next. Further increase and be better neighbors and try to work with everyone around. Because I understand this is a sensitive situation. You know, there is a gravel line to our south of Cory. They're doing, they're doing some heavy-duty things, but we are also the nearest people to the residents, so we're trying to be good neighbors. Like I mentioned, shut down our operations, sustain winds. All roads are treated with magnesium chloride. And then in addition, if it's hot or dry or windy, the roads are watered down. There's a water truck onsite. They water the material as it's provided, screened and sized. They equip the conveyors with dust skirts to direct emuls directly onto the pallet load. And then, you know, as Dominic pointed out, all the heavy-duty stuff as far as grinding and screening, they've done it on the west side of the property to keep it as far away from the residents as possible. And we regularly have contractors onsite to clean up the trash containers. So, I want to further reiterate, you know, like I said, they are in business of making wood chips and it does them no good if that's off their side or put away. And then if code comes out and they have violations, that just stops their planning. So, they want to make sure that they are following all the rules as they are stated. As noted, our use is allowed by right. We can do that use. What we're asking for today is just to increase that pile height and size. Taller pile heights, it's kind of thoughtful there, have the advantage of the materials can stay moist and compact because you have higher piles, kind of more, basically less exposure to the elements. As P, they had multiple small piles, less sensitive to the weather and erosion. And then they allow for more efficient use of space to allow that movement and safety for fires and all that in those areas. One thing we're asking about, just to kind of show you what all this means today is the black, thick black line on the screen in front of you, that's that eight-foot mesh fence that were proposed, which is adjacent to the neighbors. We're putting a recycled asphalt road base kind of on that east side as well, which will help mitigate any dust that might come off of that road from trucks traveling on it. And then we're looking at kind of varying setbacks of 100 to 75 feet, which is, I'll address that in just a moment. And then the 500-foot setback has to do with the residential grinding and screening. We're trying to push that away so it's closer to the quarry. It stays away from there. Trying to be as good neighbors as we possibly can considering our use. As Dominic already kind of raised, we believe we need all the CUP criteria for approval as outlined here. You know, our uses, the proposed use will not result in substantial or undue adverse effect. Our uses are already allowed. Piles make the more efficient, safer, and better product and keeps it on our site. As mentioned already, we're working to mitigate any of the adverse impacts such as with, in addition to the topography and the trees that will mitigate the visual, we have tree setbacks, the nets, and water. Traffic parking infrastructure for the area are unimpacted by, are particular by this request at all. And the site is suitable for that. As Dominic pointed out, there's not a lot you can do on that bottom site. It's on the bottom half of the property just because it's, because of what it was previously in its life. So, outdoor kind of uses are what it's made for. There's not going to be any undue burdens on the city's systems or not using any more water than a traditional business would. We're not relying on the fire department anymore, any of that stuff. We've done our best to provide adequate maintenance. We've created a dust mitigation control plan. We've moved the most intensive uses back at the site. We have committed to regular trash and re-remove all stuff that we've worked with the city to come up with, say, how can we make this, make this work in this facility? As noted, there's no evidence to suggest that this use violates any federal, state, or local requirements. This use is allowed by right. We have had no violations at the city level, state level, or the federal level. There's community. This provides natural, non-toxic compost and mulch. It diverts, we saw that, 350,000 tons of yard waste from local landfills. So, it seems like that's pretty good benefit. It's also a job. It's a job generator for this, for the community. A1 Organics, folks are here to talk about it more if you want to ask them. They're looking forward to moving beyond this so that they can continue to grow their business, invest money. They'd like to put a small building there so they can actually hire more employees, grow their business so they can continue to be successful within the state. And as Dominic pointed out, this complies with general purposes, goals, and objectives of the comprehensive planning plan. We believe we're in line with what should be done on this property and moving forward, we believe we're going to continue to do so. And finally, we agree with all the conditions of approval that Dominic has laid back. We do ask for two modifications. We request that the initial trial period be changed to 36 months as opposed to 18 months. This just allows them the opportunity to recoup the cost of building the net, kind of doing these other improvements, including road space. They're expensive and like to make sure they just had an opportunity to operate the business and really get a full accounting of how all this is really affecting and working at the end. And then secondly, we propose that the minimum setback for next residential properties be allowed to be 75 feet from March through September with the rest of the year being 100 feet. It's just allows just seasonal differences, just the space required, just because during the summer, you have more material, moving more material. But it doesn't impact the roads, doesn't impact the height, keep it 25 feet and keep all the best management practices. Kind of went through that a little bit quick instead of repeating a lot of what Dominic said. We believe this request is entirely reasonable. A1 Organics is excited to be in the state of Commerce City. They're excited to invest further in this property, but to do so, they really need this conditional use permit to be approved inside. So, tonight we ask for your recognition.
Thank you.
Can you go back a couple of slides for the setback? So, from the fence line, what is that total approximate line you're referring to? Right, your first setback is from the residential.
Sure. So, kind of the thin, thin red line is the property line. And then the black line is the fence, if you recall Dominic's graphic. There's a slope and the top of the slope is where we put that fence line. And then on the other side of that fence would be the, would be the minimum 25-foot road there. That dash line is roughly the 100-foot, 75-foot. It's a thick line. It's just more graphical, but roughly about where the 75 and 100 foot would be.
So, if you went to 75, obviously you would be within the road.
No, we would not be in the road.
Oh, it's not?
Yeah. We'd stay off the road. There would still be the road. It would just, there would not, there would not be 25 feet between the road and the pile. It would be right up there. But that would only be during summer months where there's a lot more material moving through, which is just natural.
They're busier during summer months, but isn't there more wind than March, if I remember right?
There may be, yeah.
Sorry. There's a topography diagram in this. If you could show us where this eight-foot fence would be. Is your topography dropping 100 feet, 100 feet away, more than eight feet? So, the fence is really not effective?
Sure, sure. So, we'll show you. So, this, this one is a little misleading. This, this particular cross-section is actually, Dominic, it's actually going through the finger of the property there where this cross-section is, right there. So, you can see it drop off. Now, if you move, move north through the site where Dominic is, our property is actually above, there's actually a slope down about 30 to 40 feet to the east of the property, excuse me, the west of our property line. It actually slopes up to ours. So, the neighbors are actually below. There it is, right there. So, right there along that edge of that, where you see the grass on the right side, right where Dominic is showing, that's where we kind of the fence would be.
Go back to that cross-section, Dominic.
So, what are the tick marks, the white, which time are the setbacks are at?
You've got to see this little notch.
Okay.
You've got to see that little notch in the part, but that's sort of approximately where the diagram is showing that difference.
Well, I'd just like to point out too, to the commissioners, if you look at the height of this eight-foot fence, now it's kind of going over to the left side of the diagram. It's just right here. Just go to the diagram. If we look at this eight-foot or anywhere along this eight-foot and we look at this 25-foot-high piles, how effective this eight-foot fence would potentially be? And I keep hearing that these taller piles will not have an adverse effect. If I recall, in the wind diagram and the, I'm not sure, the wind code, the higher you go off the ground, the more the wind increases, not decreases. And so, I'm not sure how a higher pile would stay stabilized in a higher wind capacity from eight-foot to the 25-foot. I'm confused.
Sure. So, I can't speak specifically about that, but just also 25 feet is not significant. More buildings, you're talking three, four, five, six-story buildings, which is a significant factor. We're talking 25 feet, which is roughly the height of a two-story building or the top of a two-story building. So, general idea is there's, something's going to blow a lot of times, it blows the wall of the ground. An idea is that it comes down and catches the fence. We can't hear you back here. There were discussions about creating a taller fence, but at the same time, then there's issues about how is that going to look? Do people want to look at a taller fence? It's blocking views to the west of the mountains and that. So, this was the idea that DRT came up with and that we worked with the company that we thought this was the best solution for that. So, we did look at other options and this is what, you know, as mentioned, this is someone that's brought up in the neighborhood and is potentially something to catch this material if it is. But like, like I tried to reiterate, it's our best interest to keep this stuff on-site and that's what we're trying to do with our best management practices.
Right. And then your best management practices, I'm concerned with not so much the larger particles, but the dust particles that are out there and that can be uplifted very easily.
Sure.
Because you're not selling dust particles.
No, understand, understand.
How tall are the piles typically?
They're, they're around, they're 25 feet right now.
Let me ask that question again. So, if the piles are 25 feet right now and there's no conditional use permit, shouldn't they be eight-foot tall right now?
So, while this process has gone through the development review, we, from a city perspective, are trying to ensure that they are consistent with the fire codes that are out there, but there has been an opportunity to provide for that operation while it's going through this to get to you and to the city council for review. That is, that does occur sometimes with cases as they are going through the process.
So, just the way that we're in my head, they're in violation right now since at least the Board of Adjustments in 2017? Is that what that case was?
That's correct. If I might go upon that, there was some confusion several years ago with what can be done because there was discussions about this fact that the A1 was under the impression that they had the right to do that because it was based on elevation above the front property line, which was in Monaco, which caused confusion because of the, because of the grade. So, that's what happened and it's brought to our attention that we're in violation of that and that's why we continue this cross-section.
So, you've never been made to comply to eight-foot over a year and a half or whatever this duration has been? I'm just, I'm just trying to figure this out here because if I recall at one point through the Board of Adjustments and what that would look like. So, I'm just trying to figure this out.
You are correct. They have not been made to comply with the rule.
Any further questions from the applicant?
Yeah, I have a question. So, if you look at this topography map, not on the map itself, but above the map, this kind of explains to me, A, why you have been able to have like these 25-foot piles. The piles or where the piles sit is actually in a valley or a lower elevated portion of the property than Monaco.
Did you have a question?
Yeah. So, my question is, are these piles, how, so we're proposing 25 feet into the air above what? Monaco or the elevation that's shown on this topography map?
The elevation of where the pile is, essentially the ground the pile is.
Down that line. And, and that sits below Monaco.
Similarly, yes.
That's my question.
This is a bulk operation and not a bagged operation?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
And representatives of A1 Organics are here tonight as well, making answers to specific questions about the operation. If you have more questions about the weather station and how they operate that on a daily basis, talking about what it means to shut it down, making answer all those questions as well.
Thank you. You will now admit up for a public comment. Commissioner, please step forward to the.
Hi, I'm Barry Johnson. I live at 9225 Monaco. I lived there for 40 years. It used to be a real pristine area, had waters for the Fulton did start there. Used to have rainbow trout in the water. Now it has stinkin' sawdust in the water. And if you can see that, all this water around there is getting contaminated on by this sawdust. I got pictures here. And I'm sure all of you that cut the little wood, you know how nasty sawdust is? Well, you wouldn't believe how nasty it is on my place. It's unbelievable. I seen the traffic on Monaco stop because they couldn't see because of the dust. And I was up on, on the light off there when a cloud of that stuff come by. I couldn't see the hood of my car and it was a real bad accident. It's terrible. This stuff shouldn't be here. They have no containment. They have no way of containing it. If it was eight-foot piles, maybe they could put tarp's on it. But as you say, the Board of Adjustment denied them and it's been like a big joke to them. They went ahead and did it in and they tried to tell you it's from where you're standing, but if you're standing on the moon, the piles are still over eight feet tall. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Johnson, you've provided approximately 23 pictures. Is that correct?
Yes.
And have you taken these pictures?
Yes.
And I guess, can you, we, we'll put them in record, but it'd be helpful if you could let us know approximately where they're taken from so we know and approximately when they're taken, so we just have the information on the record so they, some consequences.
They've taken them all from.
Okay, can you put that in record?
Yeah, those are all taken all from like, well.
And when were they taken last time?
Well, all at various times, you know, whenever.
Can you give each other a date range?
Well, like this was taken last year when that big windstorm came through.
Okay.
The last couple of years though?
Last year. This one here is recent. This is like.
You gave pictures of the office before.
You gave pictures of Dominic before, the last meeting. Where are those?
All right. Is my man, George, to create these to the, to the board?
Yes. Thank you, sir. Please state your name and address, please.
My name is Arlo Johnson. I live at ninety-two twenty-five Monaco. I'm Perry's wife. Uh, I was reading in here, and I, I need clarification from the board, because I thought when you guys said you denied the thing, everything was good, but I was reading in here on December, they went for, uh, now I love my glasses. Brenda, give me your glasses. And I'm trying to figure this all out as well, as if you denied it, why didn't they go down to eight-foot from then until something happened? But on here on the background, it says December two thousand eighteen, City Council adopted ordinance two-one-nine-four, which established material pile storage over eight-foot tall as an allowance used in one-dash-two, one-dash-three. So, then in my mind, I'm thinking, so ever since you denied it, they've been, they went before somebody and said, we have a conditional permit to make them taller, because they have never adjusted the heights of those piles.
Yes, thank you for your concern. I think, you know, we discussed that a little bit in our direct access to city staff as well, that was part of the Board of Adjustments, not the planning commission, but I'm talking about.
And all this history, the case history, we've lived there through all of this, and you can check the record, we've never complained about any of this gravel, the dust, any of the concerns there, but this stuff, I cannot have parties. We've, we had four, three of our daughters got married on our place. I can't have, I couldn't have a wedding, because the, the dust and stuff, I can't let my grandkids out in the pond to swim like my kids did. So it's basically ruined my retirement, and, uh, I just, this is what we've built up to and live for all this time.
Thank you, ma'am.
Hello, my name's Doug Wolf. I live at ninety-two forty-one Monaco, um, that's immediately north of, uh, the Johnsons. I share a corner with, uh, A1. You know, I'd ask you to try to put yourself, uh, in the position that you were hearing this before A1 moved into that property. Not their appeal to, oh, we've spent a lot of money and we've invested in this property. In the handout tonight, it says, "The Development Plan Amendment did not specify the location of mulching materials, interior fire access, and site navigation, or specify the height of mulching materials." Now, perhaps, uh, A1 thought that they, uh, that this rule meant they could go eight feet, um, up on Monaco, which would allow them thirty-five feet in the back. Well, if they understood that, if that's what they thought, perhaps they should have asked, uh, whoever they were working with in the city, um, whether that was the interpretation. But instead, they moved in without saying how high their piles were going to be. Would it have been regarded differently if they acknowledged that their piles were going to be thirty-five feet high? Also, as I understand it, before they moved into this property, um, they were over by, and if I'm wrong about this, um, they can correct me, they were over by Frye's Batch Plant on I-76 and 74th Avenue in that area. And that, before that, they were on over thirty acres east of Quebec. They had to move off of there, um, and now they find themselves on fifteen acres, and that's the problem. They're on too small a piece of ground, they shouldn't be there. I don't doubt that it was urgent for them to get out of where they were, um, and I don't doubt that they were, would have preferred to stay on the thirty-acre piece of property, but this piece of property is too small for them, and that's really the trouble. And maybe the, I have only one photo, if you have the means to look at it. To me, it's a pretty damning photo. It explains very clearly what, what this is like when there's a big wind blowing.
For, for the record, uh, Mr.?
Wolf.
Mr. Wolf has a, a picture on an iPad, um, to show staff that what I'd like to go ahead and do, if it's okay with councils, if you could tell us when and where this was taken, if it was, is there a date at the top there?
The date was seventeenth twenty-seventeen, four o'clock in the afternoon.
If it's okay with Mr. Wolf, I'd like to go ahead and insert, put his iPad to the, to the board, and then ask also that he, uh, I'll give you my contribution, if you might email that to possibly myself or the planner we can add.
Yes, thank you.
I own the business, uh, I was located in Denver, I owned a wood shop. We made sawdust. It was a byproduct of our manufacturing, just as this dust is a byproduct of their manufacturing. There is no way, uh, that I would have been allowed to do what, what's going on here. Now, that's looking across my neighbors at Perry Johnson's house. That to the extent that this is a product of their manufacturing, what right do they have to let this leave their property? Where does that come from? I don't know if there's something in use by right, or right by use, uh, for that. Somewhere in the stuff, they, they're saying that they have agreed to mitigate to the maximum extent possible. The maximum extent possible is to go somewhere else. The location of their twenty-five-foot pole, if you look at that, uh, that sly, I don't understand how they would even know, that, and you can see the piles on that slide, how they would even know, um, that the pile that's, uh, a hundred feet away from it is taller or, uh, not as tall as that, as that pole. Um, and those are the piles, that, and to say, let's reduce the limit to seventy-five feet, um, it's terrible sometimes, you know? It's really terrible. And the last thing I have to say, um, and perhaps I'll start with a question, is this a, a three to two majority vote? Is that passed this?
Yes, sir. It's a recommendation to.
I appreciate Mr. Yost's, uh, telling us that he was related to one of the owners. If this vote is three to two, and Mr. Yost is on one of the three, um, you know, how would you guys feel about that? And I'm not questioning Mr. Yost's integrity in any way. It just seems to me it's an issue, and I don't know that a year ago I would have known the word recusal. Now we all know the word recusal. But I think it might be appropriate, and that's all I have to say. Thank you for the consideration.
Any other comments from the public before we?
I would like to ask, uh, A1.
Ma'am, ma'am, can you move it out there?
Um, I, I believe this person's already spoke to the crowd, so you'd be, right here a second time, is that, was that your second?
Yes, we can ask.
I would like to ask A1 how they monitor what material comes into their. Because if you have like plywood, I understand it's put together with different kinds of glues and different kinds of poisons, and, and how do you monitor what the public brings into you before you mulch it? Is that allowed to ask?
Can we direct a question to the commission?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Right. Understood. Thank you for. Please state your name and address.
Um, my name is Keith Saban, and, uh, I have had the occasion of working down at Perry Johnson's place, oh, I'm sorry, eighty-one ninety-three Counter Drive. I've, uh, I've been working down there at Perry's quite a bit, and, uh, I've actually gotten to experience one of these, uh, uh, wind conditions. And I've made a few notes here. I've got a, I've got a question. My first question is, if this, A1 has been operating outside of the code for eighteen months, uh, and now we're miraculously expecting them to comply from this point forward, uh, I, I kind of figured eight-foot was eight-foot until you got, you got the okay to go higher. And, uh, I, I agree with, uh, what, what's your, what's your name?
Administrator.
Amador, Mr. Amador?
Correct, Administrator Amador.
When, when you, uh, when you said you didn't understand how an eight-foot pile was gonna, was gonna be, uh, more destructive to the environment than a twenty-five-foot pile, when you've got all that surface area of a twenty-five-foot pile, even though it's not broader, it's higher, and to try to contain a twenty-five-foot pile with an eight-foot fence is like trying to tell me not to step over my dog, I'm thinking, but, uh, just my way of looking at things, I guess. On page, uh, one-seventy-six of this handout, down in the specific section, land use and growth, down at the bottom, it, it says, "The properties generally have the same classification of what is classified, uh, the property that A1 sits on." And I guess in general means that the previous tenants, um, they're considered general or not general? If A1 is, is, uh, a commercial outfit dumping stuff into the air, then, uh, I guess the tenants must have been doing that all along, is kind of what the wording to me means there. And, uh, they're, they're recycling the air, or recycling all of these products, but they're, they don't say anything about recycling the toxins and stuff into the air that they're grinding up and, and reducing the air quality for these folks. And myself included, when I'm down there working at Perry's place, I've, there've been times I've, in fact, I keep a dust mask in the back of my car, so when I go down there, I can put it on when I'm, when I'm working with them. So, and I think I've covered just about all of it. I'd like to see, uh, under this dust mitigation on page one-seventy-nine, uh, they, they put an awful lot of emphasis on what it looks like from Monaco, and what it looks like from different areas. I don't think Perry and the rest of these people who live down there really care what it looks like. We care what it's doing to the, to the air that we're breathing down there. And, uh, I'd like to, I'd like to see a copy of this, uh, what they say their dust mitigation proposals are all about. I'd like to see a copy of that plan, and I'm sure these folks that live down there would too. So, I don't want to bore you to tears, but, uh, I've got, I've got other, other notes here, too. I just think, I think careful consideration needs to be given to, to the fact that these folks have been down there for most of their lives, they're, they're retirement age now, and they can't breathe the air anymore. Thank you.
Thank you.
One note staff would like to make is that the proposed dust control mitigation plan is currently included in today's packet, starting at page one ninety-nine.
Any further comments from the public? Please state your name and address.
My name's Perry Ron. Those are my parents. I live in Brighton, but I work for Arlo right next door.
Say your exact address, please.
One-four-seven-five-five Piccadilly Road.
Thank you.
Um, I've worked for the gravel company for twenty-six years. I know for a fact that dust skirts on conveyors do not work. Also, I have a few questions about how is an eight-foot mesh fence going to stop a twenty-five-foot pile? And I also know that twenty-five feet is almost like when they have a high wind warning or high-profile vehicles, they don't want them on the road, so why would a twenty-five-foot pile be better than a low-profile pile? The water truck, I never see it run, and if you want to get the top of the pile, you have to have somebody stationed with a hose to get the top of the pile. It has a fin, but it shoots only maybe six foot high. Those are my concerns about. And the fence, how is an eight-foot mesh, and what size is the mesh? How's it gonna stop? Everything's blown over. Have you seen the wind or the snow that breaks? It just hangs up right there behind the fence.
Thank you. Any further comments from the public? We'll now close with the public.
Our, our rules of order do provide that, give that to you for your bottom, if there's some in opposition.
Would the advocate please, like to step forward?
Sure, thank you. Uh, a couple members from A1 Organics would like to kind of respond to some of the comments made tonight.
Yes, your question. Please state your name and address.
My name is Travis Bonson, president of A1 Organics. Sorry. My name is Travis Bonson, and president of A1 Organics. My address is nineteen-twenty-one Delta Court, Windsor, Colorado. So I think probably one of the questions I want to address with the eight-foot piles, um, as to why they are better for erosion is because you, if I have a eight-foot, if I have, let's just put it in yards, a, a, a fifty-by-three-hundred-foot-long, eight-foot-tall pile, I'm gonna have way more surface area on that pile than a cone-shaped pile that self-compresses. So that's, that's the theory behind that. It's, it's practice for anyone in our industry around the country, because you get less material surface area. So I'd like to address that. Um, the reason we went to an eight-foot mesh fence, and I want to point out, it's a mesh fence that will, is because when you have, you, you all have mulch, that, many of you I'm sure have colored mulch, uh, that's, that's the stuff we produce. And when the wind blows very hard, it can move, but it's, it's not gonna blow up in the air, ten feet in the air. It generally rolls across the ground. And so, um, I did not get a chance to see Mr. Perry's pictures, but I'm, I'm, I'm very aware of where they are. Uh, we had a clocked windstorm last year of eighty-six miles per hour, um, I believe it was around late May, was it April? April of last year, where I believe those pictures were taken. We immediately, the next day, and we did have mulch blow into his property. The next day, Kevin, uh, went over to Perry's house, because we knew that we had an issue with that, that eighty-six mile an hour wind. Uh, we offered to send a crew of five to ten people to rake his entire five-acre property if we needed to, to clean it up. The same windstorm was tearing buildings off roofs. So, you know, that's why we can't. So, you know, that's why we can't say we can for sure contain it at all times. We have moved all of the operations over five-hundred feet back that are screening operations. I've been to the site multiple times during heavier winds. One, when they are heavier, there's no equipment running, and when I've been down there, I see more dust coming off the parking lots than I do off of our site. So, I wanted to address that. The material coming in, I'll have Kevin or Bob address that, but we don't take painted woods, we don't take treated woods. We may get a piece of plywood, or not plywood, particle board from time to time, but it's very minimal. We're looking for clean green lace and clean pallet wood, okay? As far as air quality, we do follow the CBPA-G air quality standards, and they have been out to our site to inspect it. They're also, will respond to complaints, and we've never had a violation. And, you know, we want to continue to work with the neighbors where we can. We're open to other suggestions. You know, we were concerned with putting a fence up that would interfere more with their view, because we really feel like the eight-foot fence will stop that product during a major storm wind from getting on their property, because it will be, it's really the ground level that we're concerned with. This is a conditional use. If we find that we need to put in a higher fence, if we feel like it's justified, you know, I'm sure we would work with the planning department if that needs to be addressed. With regard to the defense of why have we been operating over eight feet? Why wasn't the question asked? And it was asked. When we went through the process with a different planning staff or city staff who is no longer with the city anymore, it was understood that because of the eight-foot requirement, and that the piles would be monitored from the city height at eight feet. We would have never invested in moving to that facility and took the chance that we would just do twenty-five-foot piles and no one would see. You know, so it was our understanding. We did make that commitment on that site based upon that understanding, although it was never documented, because it wasn't, there wasn't a reason to document it, because everyone understood it was coming off the Monaco Street side of the entrance. So, I do want to address that. So, we went to the Board of Adjustments because of that, to try to get that code changed. The Board of Adjustment, my understanding was, pointed out to us, they're not in the business of changing code, they enforce it. So, that's why it was deferred. With the new regulations of the city of Commerce City, we felt like this was a good way to get this compliance figured out in order to operate our business efficiently in the space that we're in. So, I don't know if there's any other comments on operational? Oh, watering. We water a minimum of four times a day. We maintain a water log. Kevin, do you want to speak for that?
Kevin, please state your name and address.
Kevin Northitt, 5499 East Cannon Road, 42 Strausper, Colorado. So, there's a water, there's both a monitoring system for the wind, and then there's a monitoring system for the water that we use on site. And the computer system that runs the wind system inside is monitored all the time by our gate attendant. And that, whatever the protocol is that we have, depending on what we're doing on site, and in this case, it would be fifteen miles an hour going forward, she radios out, "Production shutdown." Anytime production is shut down on the site, I manage this site, and I also manage our Eaglewood site. And so, the site supervisor knows the protocol of how we do that, so there's obviously a record that we shut down sites, and really, Dom, if you don't mind, if you pull up the one that has the different colored mulch. I almost want to make an example of why the site's laid out the way it is. They're referring to this. Go back to the other one if you could, the top view. That one right there, if you see the screening, or all of our colored mulch is on this side of the site. And the reason for that is because it allows us to maintain quality control. So, if we had all of this dust blowing from the west side of our site, it literally would be contaminating our retail material, which obviously wouldn't make sense, but I think is what they tried to get earlier. But as far as the watering of the site, there's a log, there's an online log that we use in our office that shows what the meter being was when we're in, and the time that the site was watering. So, it is a consistent process, it's not just one-on-one. There's a very specific protocol of when we water the site and why we water the site.
Was part of implementing your dust mitigation plan, is that your responsibility?
Well, ultimately, it's the site supervisor and all the employees inside as well, on any of our sites.
You were part of building this plan, the dust mitigation plan?
I did, yes.
I do have a question. How far from the residential buildings is your aisles in any of them?
The color pods?
Any of them?
The closest one right now is just under a hundred feet, about seventy-seven feet.
So, it's similar over there in this year?
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I hung it with this. That's laid out, there is no residential customer right around this, and we utilize the same, it's pretty much the same number of acres, you know? And the reason that, you know, one of the reasons that we looked at this site is it did allow us to become much more efficient. Yes, at the Stapleton site, we had considerably more land, but we didn't utilize a lot of it. Efficiency in production is the key, you know, as much as your key is safety and maintenance or anything else, being efficient, and that whole site was laid out to allow us to be able to operate on that site with twenty-five-foot piles.
Knowing that, Travis, I'm kind of curious. So, you bought the site with the idea that, or you understood that it was twenty-five feet you were going to be using it, is that, I hear you correctly on that?
That's correct.
And did you, but you were also aware that in writing, if there was a requirement for eight feet or less, is that correct?
That's correct. There was an interpretation that was given to us at the time, that the eight feet would be measured from this Monaco Street site and our site. Our piles are thirty-five feet below that.
You know, I've been, personally, I'll say, a long time, fifty years. And the fact of the matter is, we're always, because I've been hurt as too many times, when you have specifics like that, that are different from what the writing says, I think it's in everybody's best interest to have that clarified, and your legal staff review it and say, "Yes, you are correct and you're incorrect." You know, obviously, we, the city, have dropped the ball a little bit, in my opinion, by not bringing this to a head sooner. But the fact of the matter is, in my mind, you knew it was eight-foot in writing, and that was the requirement, and it had to be followed based on words, you know, non-documentable conversations.
We were actually operating for over a year with inspections and no issues. It wasn't until the certificate of designation was done on the Brown Brothers site that it was pointed out to us. So, I, you know, so, it was before my time. I understand and I agree with what you're saying. We have looked everywhere for documentation of that. But bottom line is, that's why we're going through this process. It's imperative to our business to be able to have these pile heights. I also did want to point out one of the comments that was made about us moving from site to site. You know, Stapleton, obviously, we were there for twenty years, always knowing that eventually we would have to leave because of development that's happening there in Stapleton. The Frye site was a temporary site while Tony Fiori, who was the owner at that time, went through the development of this site for us to move on, or eventually I'd go, it was gonna be a rental yard at one time, but, so, you know, Tony Fiori's group primarily spearheaded this in the development plan, because it wasn't a property that was already existed and finished, that a tenant moved out and we just moved in. It was, you know, so from that perspective, we did have a developer that took the lead on that. And, go back to your question, that we, you know, had that misunderstanding.
How long have you been on the site?
We've been there since July of two thousand... Two thousand fifteen. We've been operating there over three and a half years. We have no air violations, dust violations. We've had several inspections, we've had complaint-oriented inspections, we have surprise inspections, we have invited inspectors to come witness the grinding operation, to come witness the screening operation, and we are planning on hosting one here sometime, and it will be a surprise, but our grinder is actually only on-site.
This time of year? Sorry about that. This time of year, once a month at most, in the summertime, maybe every three to four weeks. So, I guess a more reasonable estimate this time of year would be about every six weeks that a grinder's on-site. It's on-site from two to three days when it is on-site. The screener, screening operation is a year-round operation based upon weather conditions.
Is it possible to put this in some indoors? Are there operations around the country that have, you know, you have a pretty big tent? Is he a lot higher, or higher than?
Practically, we've talked about that. There is really no practical way. You create a lot of other situations having this machinery, you know, you've got huge claws. I mean, practically, cost-wise, there is...
Cost may, no. This is a similar conversation, quite frankly, to when they brought smoking in parks, is the air quality more important for the public than the possibility of cars? Are there operations similar to yours that are undercover in the country?
Not that I'm aware of. I mean, we're pretty familiar with most of the large composting mulch companies in the country, and...
Bob, have you ever heard one?
Well, ask Bob, he's been around the company for twenty-five years. I'm not aware of any wood grinding operation that I'm aware of that's been inside indoors. But Bob?
Bob, you're 10905 East 153rd Drive, Brighton. So, the question on all these contained facilities, and the answer is, I've not worked any that does that kind of operation under roof. Most likely, there's a hundred and seventy-five of these facilities, I think, in California, and there's somewhere around five hundred, some across the country, they're all outside. Composting is done under roof in places, we do not compost at this facility, and it has to do with safety issues and things like that with type of equipment. And the grinders are pretty aggressive, that kind of thing. So, if you have any other questions, we have a technical side to that answer.
What it do to your operation if they step back, try to increase them further, or further to the south and west?
The operational, you mean for the grinding and the screening operations? Another thing I would like to point out, Kevin mentioned seventy-five feet is a current pile that is from the property line. I would guess it's probably more like about two-hundred feet from the actual residence. You can see that looking at that picture there. So, I'd like Kevin to speak to the operation, I expect.
Again, to go back to when we originally laid out that site, and it became a viable option for us to run, the way the site was laid out, and where we piled it, or how the material flowed through that site at different times of the year, you know, we've used the footprint as efficient as we can to be able to still make money and still produce what we need to produce. If we were to even further crunch down our operations, you know, I honestly don't know how we would be able to survive with that, with the amount of material that we need to produce annually, just from your current orders. You know, that wouldn't even speak to the fact of trying to grow or develop, and as was mentioned before, to be able to expand the employee footprint at that site as well. You know, it really would handicap us, or handicap us in a pretty major way, if we had to even move that further. Even going from the seventy-five foot to the hundred-foot, you know, at different times of the year, it really means moving and adjusting some of our equipment to make the, granted it's twenty-four feet, put it in a production facility twenty-four feet. And if you go to any manufacturing facility, they'll tell you exactly what they need for each operation, and the footprint for each operation to be able to be efficient and effective in what they do. And even though it's several acres, it's the same story. That is your question?
I do have a question, and it's more for Travis. How long have you been the president?
I've been with A1 since about 2015. I've been the president there since June of 2016.
Right, and I keep hearing these buzzwords about Stapleton, and I want to thank President Wolf for bringing this up. As I sat on this Stapleton cab for years, I don't recall the relationship, but there was the, I'm gonna call it, the mountain of recycled concrete that was out there, that if you were over on Wazworth and Thirty-Six, you could see that?
Yes.
And there was a breach of contract from the contract, who, I'm just gonna say, the owner switched the contract to, I believe it was A1. I'm just trying to, I'm not sure how that went just now, so I'm, can you clarify a little bit how that went, because it goes with business practice and being a violation?
There was no, at the Stapleton side, we were under assemblies with recycling materials. We operated on the west side of the facility, just on the other side of the ex point, it was marked right here. We were there about sixteen years, and when we went in there, we were told that we'd have nine to ten years because of the development of Stapleton coming out after the last section. Recession delayed that another number of years. We never had any ownership interest in it, we never had anything to do with any kind of re-permitting with recycled materials. There were powder piles, there were rock piles, it's totally separate operation. So, there's nothing...
We were just a little see on that property, really.
Thank you for the clarity, that helps me understand kind of what happened there because of selling Stapleton cap for a while, and I was like, something doesn't sound right.
Yeah, when they shut it down, then there, Commerce City, other people that are using the facilities wanted to help us locate. So, the DIA board went through extensive process and developers to try to find property along the DIA cap, all of it. So, the reason we ended up here, this sort of process where, when that shut down, we had a temporary operation while we found the site. Then we became Commerce City with two different locations, and this was the one that was recommended to us by Commerce City, and because of its use, and that's how we got here. So, I was the one that set through all the meetings, and so, you know, as long as I can remember, you know, still can from a while yet, so I'll be answering questions, but that's the process that we got here. So, there's two recommendations of which site is better too, so that's a bit difficult. We were told we couldn't use places like the piles are too high.
Thank you for the clarification.
Thank you.
Any additional questions for the applicant? Thank you.
All right, thank you all.
We will now, we have already closed the public comment.
I can't say anymore?
No, sir, sorry. Now, now for discussion for...
So, if you have any further questions of staff, the applicant, or the public, then you're appropriate to take a motion in a second and then have discussion on that motion.
Do I have a motion for this? I'll make a motion. So, based upon the motion, based upon the analysis above, the development review team believes that the application meets the criteria for the conditional use permit set forth in the Land Development Code and recommends that the planning commission forward the conditional use permit request to the city council with favorable recommendation, subject to the following conditions. Condition A, this conditional use permit shall expire eighteen months after the date of approval. The applicant shall be required to renew the conditional use permit prior to the expiration date in order to continue utilizing the site. Condition B, the conditional use permit is granted only for the storage of dried mulch chips, inbound recycled wood products, mulching material stacker, and raw wood chips at a height of no greater than twenty-five feet. All other outdoor storage on the property must comply with all outdoor storage requirements that apply to the property zone I-two, as currently adopted or amended by the city. Any deviations from this condition will require an amendment to this application. Condition C, all mulch piles shall be a minimum of one-hundred foot from adjacent residential properties at any given time, measured from the property line. Condition D, a minimum setback of five-hundred feet for grinding and screening operations shall apply from adjacent residential properties, measured from the property lines. Condition E, grinding operations will not occur on the site when the wind speeds exceed fifteen miles per hour for a duration of at least ten minutes. Condition F, the applicant shall construct and maintain a minimum of eight foot high net on the east property boundary to prevent any wood chips from blowing onto the neighbor's property. Condition G, the applicant shall construct and maintain twenty-five, a twenty-five demarcation pole on the subject property in order to assist with ongoing enforcement of the twenty-five foot high pile restriction. Condition H, primary high dry piles of the outdoor storage areas shall be paved with recycled asphalt and maintained by the applicant as indicated in the approved development plan for case D dash two-five-five dash one-four dash one-five dash one-six dash one-nine. Condition I, water trucks shall be kept and utilized on-site during business hours for the spraying of mulch piles and dry piles. Condition J, property shall act in accordance with the dust control and mitigation plan, included as exhibit A. Condition K, due to the nature of the operations, the applicant will maintain the premise to be free of garbage, trash, and excessive wood chip debris at all times. And condition L, the applicant shall comply with all federal, state, and local laws.
Second. Do I take a vote? Discussion?
Discussion. I think there, so as to worry, I think there was a very good discussion here, and I would think that there would be an amendment to the conditions that are here about what it holds. In regards to enforcement of the fifteen mile per hour, ten minute dust, I'm not real sure that this eight-foot fence is going to be adequate considering the twenty-five-foot pile height. My concern, my concern also is that if there is a twenty-five-foot hole in the middle of the site, I would imagine that he would want a twenty-five-foot hole at each individual pile for enforcement to be able to look at that and adequately say, yes, this is a twenty-five-foot pile. Those are three of my concerns that I have in regards to the conditions.
I think the eight mile per hour, ten minutes is something that can change you. You know, I tend to say, you know, anytime it winds speeds ten miles per hour or more, then shut it down. However, that being said, that's not really where the majority of the dust comes from. It's from the app, the label, you have their machine, their grinder going, you know, ten, fifty percent of the time. Most of the dust is coming off the surface of the... And you said, how you mitigate it. I mean, it's tough for the business and it's tough for the people to use the size.
I also like at the setbacks, back to the question that, you know, I asked, it seemed like the setbacks even could be, we have to further push that setback on the site to help mitigate some of the pressure just coming out. Like you said, the eight-foot screening piles, fifty feet, seventy-five feet, hundred feet, two-hundred, further back, I think, would help assist that as well. You know, as far as the applicant requesting additional time, I do not believe that, you know, the conditional use permit should be extended to thirty-six months. Eighteen month is probably appropriate. Would not want to recommend anything greater than eighteen months. As far as decreasing the setbacks, I would not be in favor of that as well. I think possibly like increasing the setbacks would be something for discussion.
You know, perhaps there's so many things here, and certainly I would like some understanding of how you can monitor this on a constant basis, you know. Air quality monitoring, some sort, by a third party or a record check. You know, I tend to feel that, for me, maybe I would say to the applicant that if you're going to deny this, then please try to work through some of these things and come back with a, you know, a plan that addresses some of the things we've been about. Discussion?
I would also add that erosion control is... Erosion control, if you don't stabilize your dirt, it makes its way into drains and whatnot. And there are very hefty fines, the ten thousand dollar a day for not stabilizing your dirt. In my mind, these wood chips are very similar in nature, even though how you stabilize them, and then over them, what do you do to keep the dust particles, if you will, from entering or exiting off-site? I'm thinking out loud here, so I'm tipping a little bit. But I also got to think about the health, safety, and welfare of the residents that were here first. It's kind of like the Dick's Sporting Goods sitting here, and you're having concerts, and people build houses around them, and then complain about, well, there's a concert keeping my children up at night. Well, if you knew that the stadium was there. So, when I flip the script a little bit and I think about who was there first and what the impact is to the residents, I would have to agree that, under the impression that this needs to be a little more thought out and brought to the commission. So, on those grounds, I will keep looking at it.
Any further discussion?
Yeah. Will we talk about the... We talked about air quality. Normally, it's within measuring some type of, you know, something, carbon monoxide, whatever. What do you propose we measure with air quality?
So, this is where we're not experts in air monitoring, and I think we could, as the commission, of what that looks like. But I'm not going to go out on a ledge and say, I'm going to propose something. I need the applicant to propose what that looks like and not under such generic criteria of conditions. If that makes sense?
I agree with that. I mean, it's regulated by the state. There's many agencies out there that will tell you how many particles per whatever there might be out there. I'm under the impression, too, that I would not have a favorable for these conditions. I would like to see the operation work at the current eight-foot standard, see how the operation is functioning, and this is something that they can come back to the board, obviously, you know, in a year, in eighteen months after the operation has complied with the eight-foot pile standards, has a little bit of track record, they can come back to the board.
Or even, or even, they can come, in my mind, they can even come back sooner if they had the answers to, you know, how we monitor it and how, you know, we're sure that the complaints that seem to be fairly apparent can be mitigated through, you know, specific monitoring.
Come back with a better plan?
Right. I don't want to be misconstrued in saying that economic development within the city is not important. The city is not trying to work with local businesses and job creation. I do like Chairman of the Board's comments that we do need more data at eight-foot pile height. Let's see what that looks like. And then later on down, when we need enough data to see what the air quality would be. And once we have that baseline, then we come back and we say, okay, all of these monitoring, you know, things have happened. We can go up to this twenty-five foot and see what changes in that air quality, if anything. I know that's not probably something that... Well, no, I think it is something that we need to do just for the purposes of getting the data. We need a baseline of that data, what that looks like. So, again, that's what we're asking.
Is there an alternative motion on...
We have a motion that's been segmented before the...
Okay, so we need to vote for the motion?
Correct. The motion that's pending is the motion to approve this U P with the conditions to recommend, to recommend approval to the city council of the C O P with the condition state. That is the motion.
Will please vote. The motion has failed by a zero yeses. Is there an alternative motion from commissioners?
Chairman of the Board, I'd like to request some time for staff to come up with an alternative motion, possibly, or us to convene on what that looks like. Because I'm not really sure that I know what that motion would be. I don't know how that would go with that.
My opinion is that's not our job. Let's deny it and with the recommendation that the applicant come back with and be understanding what our concerns are.
So, there are alternative motions that are presented in the packet for your review and consideration. Of course, these are, be considered in light of the approval criteria.
If we continue the case, would mean that it would also be brought back to the board at a future date?
Continuing the case is an option for the, that's always an option for the planning commission to consider. At this point, though, I would remind the commission that you are recommending not yet. So, at this point, you are not a final decision maker. And so, one alternative is to, you've obviously denied a recommendation for approval. One alternative is to recommend denying, through a formal vote. Another option is to recommend continuation and able to come back before this body. I would strongly request that you provide direction as to what you would want to see different in the second, in a second year.
My opinion on that, on the second, to the other commissioners, that would be to recommend and deny. I think that there would not be enough additional information within a month, two months period. I truly would like to see the site with the eight-foot piles for an extended period of time, with the dust mitigation plan implemented for a series of time.
I think I agree that we should deny it.
And Chris, I'm not sure that we know the right questions to ask, quite frankly.
If you're considering something other than a making recommendation to council at this time, it may be appropriate for you to actually ask the applicant what they, how they would like to handle that, if they would like to have that continuation, if they would like to draw an application, if they would like to have you go ahead and make the recommendation, either up or down. That might be instructive to how you want to see.
That's how the applicant, please like to...
Can I make a recommendation? Certainly. Do we have air quality readings from the past?
Just as, right, we are waiting for some sort of motion in a second for discussion. That would be the proper process at this point.
That might, I'm brief north design, eleven oh one Banning Street, Denver, Colorado, I would be zero two zero four. You know, we are definitely open to continuance. I mean, we heard some things tonight, considering air quality monitoring and all that, and welcome, we'd like to go back to the drawing, not back to drawing board and discuss with staff if there's opportunity, if you feel there's opportunity for us to get to a common ground to move this forward. But as Commissioner, as you mentioned, he wasn't sure if we could do that, you know, because I know we have to do a date certain in the next month or two months. We were diligently to make that happen. We would like to do that. We would prefer, not we don't want to. If you don't feel out of work, we may prefer you to vote on this thing. But we believe we can, we can go back and revisit, revisit some of the comments you guys made tonight, see if we can do a further address and adequately address those items tonight. We would ask if you also could lay out, I do have a few monitored ground, but just to make sure that we address the items, please.
So, it sounds like the applicant is going to have a continuance, but again, you know, we're in this process, we're looking for a motion in a second, so...
Do I have any motions from commissioners?
Mr. Chairman, I recommend, I'm sorry, I move that the planning commission enter finding that the requested conditional use permit of the property located at ninety-one oh nine Monaco Street contained case C H one twenty-one dash nineteen. I'm sorry.
Sorry.
Do we, excuse me, start over? Excuse me, start over. It's correct, sir. Mr. Chairman, I move that the planning commission continue the requested conditional use permit. Make it sound for the record where we have one or just continuation.
We do, I believe on the one eighty-six of your packet, there is a recommended motion that, excuse me, a tentative motion to continue.
Okay, Mr. Chairman, I move that the planning commission continue the requested conditional use permit for the property located at ninety-one oh nine Monaco Street, contained in case CU one twenty-one dash nineteen to a future planning agenda.
Second. Any further discussion?
Yes, I have a question. I understand the continuance piece and the continuance. I'd like to see that the applicant actually get into compliance first because they've been operating for such a long time. And I need that baseline of what that air monitoring looks like for the board. I will be voting against the continuance and denial at this point because I think we need to get into compliance first. And so now this is a legal question. That continuance can last for thirty days, sixty days? Can we put a condition on what that looks like or it's just, because I'm like black and white, deny it?
I think the procedure where you're asking me is if, right now, the motion is seconded, just puts off to a future planning agenda. You could specify a particular date to come back or, you know, the next meeting in March or April. What you're contemplating is someone's contemplating an amendment to the motion that was made.
Along those lines, I don't think we have to see that they have met what has been the requirements all along because we all know that it hasn't worked and so on and so forth. But if they can prove to us that what they are doing will work and will be monitored, I'm good with that. I don't think we need to make them go backwards in their operation. If they can come up with a way that we know relatively well for the future, then it's going to do the things that we're asking specifically for air quality control.
And my, and for the commissioners as well, how long is that? I'd like to go through at least one season, summer, winter, fall, to see what that looks like because the wind does vary over time. And so if we're going to amend and put that continuance there, I'd like to put that condition on at least one seasonal cycle.
I agree with this. I stated earlier, I would not be in favor of a continuation. I'd be in favor of denial. I would like the property to see what it acts through a season of piled and be back forward a year, sixteen months. So I would be amenable to the denial of the continuance as well.
Okay, we rely on those as a test. Correct.
Understood. So can I withdraw?
The property, the motion's been seconded, the best thing we do at this time is to go down the motion. Because we have a motion pending for a continuance of the case.
So we will now vote on the motion for the continuance. The motion for the continuance, one yes or noes, is not asked. Is there an alternative motion? From the commissioners?
Mr. Chairman, I move that the planning commission editor finding that the requested conditional use permit for the property located at ninety-one oh nine Monaco Street, contained in case CU one-two-one dash one-nine, failed to meet the following criteria, the land development code.
Is there a second?
We need a basis for that denial of conditions or you would identify the criteria that are not being met. Those are on the twenty-two, one eighty-three of your packet.
I was under the impression we didn't have to give any specific reasons in order to deny.
I think if you, looking at this table, if there was, if you just wanted to state which one of those criteria they did not meet, you don't have to do anything more than that. So there are one, two, three, four, five, six, seven.
And our rules of procedure that has been adopted by this commission does require a denial recommendation of for specific reasons?
The applicant had not provided adequate assurance of continuing maintenance.
Is there a second?
Is that the, is that the entire motion? I know on the template there is an additional line there. Is that something? If you want to do that even?
Yes.
Then please state your motion.
Restate it.
Please.
Mr. Chairman, I move the planning commission editor finding that the requested conditional permit for the property located at ninety-one oh nine Monaco Street, contained in case CU one-two-one dash one-nine, failed to meet the following criteria, the land development code. The applicant provided inadequate assurance of continuing maintenance.
Can we further amend or expand upon?
Yes, there is an additional suggested line in the template motion. At this point, I'm assuming that the movement does not want to do that when we were waiting for a second?
Mr. Chairman, can we amend that?
Without a second, there's nothing to amend.
Do I have a second?
Second. Mr. Chairman, can we amend this?
So you're making a motion to amend the motion?
Yes. A motion that the following amendments to that motion, that number one, the proposed use does result in a substantial or undue adverse effect on adjacent property. And that adverse effects have been, have not been and mitigated to the maximum extent feasible. And that the use does not totally comply with the general purposes, goals, and objectives and standards of the comprehensive plan.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion?
So this will be discussion on the amendment to the motion?
Right. And just so that I'm clear on what the amendment would be. I'm just trying to make sure that we have a motion, an amended motion. So not only is the first criteria not amended, we have an additional couple of criteria that do not mean correct.
That's correct.
We'll call for a vote? On the amendment? The motion has passed by yeses.
So now we have, so the amendment to the motion has passed. Now the underlying amended motion is still before the commission.
We already had a second on that, so we'll vote for
Message for the discussion, correct?
Any further discussion? Call for a vote? The motion has passed by yeses through and
So this would go before the city council with your recommendation of
Deny.
Deny the reasons set forth in the record.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to just address the people who came in with their opinions and viewpoints on this. I certainly appreciate your input. It helps us make a better recommendation to the city council. I would certainly hope you understand that we're trying to balance both sides here. Employment and good commerce is important to our city as well. And these things happen unfortunately. We try to find common ground with them at the best. My suggestion is if you have specific ideas how to monitor and how to mitigate the issues that you have, get them in writing, send them to the people, meet with them, try to find that common ground so that we can mitigate those things as best possible for both parties. No question in my mind, neither one of the parties are going to be perfectly satisfied with the outcome. But if we can find as much common ground as we can through good communication, then we'll try and work with each other. And I think what I heard is everybody would like to have that happen. More power to all of the steps we exist in.
I would say, thank you. So the agenda would be to?
Actually, I understand that Steph has some refreshments available for the commissioner. I know it's got a late, so if we want to take a minute recess, we can do that. Or could we move on to the study session?
I would suggest a ten-minute recess.
And you vote, boys vote if you're prepared?
Everyone good with that?
Yes. Ten-minute recess.
Yeah, I know that it was really the agenda sorted because the study session is still starting, maybe? So it shouldn't have been after the interview. It should have been two minutes. I know. That's what I told them. So we're raising, closing stuff up. Close the recording, yes.
Where are the refreshments?
Oh, Tricia's forgetting that.